I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I want to, I'm very happy to announce that we have three new board members, which will give us a quorum, which we haven't had in a long time. So I really appreciate you guys coming out and volunteering and helping us out and helping out the city. All right. This meeting is being held in accordance with New Jersey statute requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act sunshine laws. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that if you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form outlining the procedures for obtaining building permits and mercantile licenses. At the conclusion of your case tonight, please approach the board administrator, Palma, to sign the provided information sheet. Roll call?
Michael Richmond.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
Here.
John Pitts.
Here.
Dan Adams.
Craig Palmisano.
Here.
Rich Tolson.
Here.
Johanna Persky.
Here.
Herb Bozagno.
Here.
Steven Giasecki.
Here.
Andrew Campbell.
Here.
Sam Friedman.
Here.
Patty Rosenberg. Here. Swearing in, should we do this swearing in?
Approval minutes, do we have like the numbers are just...
No, that's for resolutions.
Okay.
Well, you can do the minutes and resolutions first.
They weren't anywhere.
Yes, because they can't vote on that.
Okay, so we'll do the approval amendments for the last meeting, April 24th, 2025.
What do I do?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, approval of decisions and resolutions, 19-2025 Amy and Jeff Kaplan, 2025 Jefferson Beach House Condominium Association, 21-2025 111 South Light Avenue LLC, 22-2025 Zagano's Management Incorporated.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have three new board members, welcome. I have to swear each of you in, but we can do them as a group. Rich Tolson's going to be a full-time member now, but he's been sworn in, so we don't need to swear him again. So it's Johanna Persky, Herb Bozagno, and Sam Friedman. What I'm going to do is ask you to stand up, face me, raise your right hand, and then basically repeat after me, and we can all do it at once. But what I'm first going to say is aye, then each of you state your name, and then everything else is the same for all of you. So, aye, each of you state your name.
Herb Bozagno.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will impartially and justly perform all of the duties of the office of planning board member according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, welcome. Congratulations. When you get a chance to sign me, give him back.
Okay, we're going to get started with our first case, Joseph and Barbara Murray, 104 South Kenyon Avenue, block 12, lot 11, located in the S-30 zoning district, seeking C-variants relief for building coverage height and potentially others in order to elevate the existing single-family home. Colonel Taxes, Water, and Sewer Payments, proof of advertising and notification provided, represented by James P. Swift.
Mr. Swift, I know you, I know we spoke, but if you want to address the board, and I don't foresee an issue, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is James Swift, I represent Joe and Barbara Murray, who are here with me in the second row. We have an application pending for 104 South Kenyon Avenue. During the course of the weekend, obviously, it was a morally weekend, some parking issues came up. Our architect was talking with the Murray's, and he came up with some possible maybe reconfiguration, reconfigurations that may make this property more parking compliant. With the board's permission, we'd like to pursue those options. Can't guarantee it's going to ultimately result in a plan before the board that will be, but we'd like to pursue it because some of the parking things that came up, any parking relief that they can do would be helpful. So, we're going to ask the board if the board can make a determination that we can carry this to the June hearing date. I would respect the request if the board makes it, thinks it's the appropriate thing, is not to ask to be renoticed because it's pretty expensive, and if you could hear us in June, hopefully we'll have a plan that's a little more, let's say, I think the plan's palatable as it is, we're going to try to make it more palatable.
So it's June 26th at 7:00?
Yeah, I assume no one has an objection to that, so just for the record, if anyone's here for the application, the Murray application, 104 South Kenyon Avenue, which is block 12, lot 11, that's going to be heard on June 26th at 7:00, not 6:30, it's actually an hour later because there's a commission meeting before, and the applicant will not be required to republish or renotice. So if anyone's here for that application, this is your official notice to come back on June 26th at 7:00.
Okay, thank you, Board, for the accommodation, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
See you in June, thank you. Are we excused?
And I...
Are we excused?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think, it's my understanding also, Palma, the Cratchman application's also requested an adjournment.
Eric's coming.
Okay. I assume he's going to ask for no notice and no publication, but if anyone's here for 36 North Rumpson Avenue, it is going to be, it's not going to be tonight, but there...
Wait, 4, 6, 364?
364.
364 North Rumpson.
364?
The Cratchman.
Yes.
Number five.
Number five.
364. 364.
All right.
Cratchman, it's going to be next month, or it's going to be not, it's not going to be tonight, their attorney's coming eventually, and we'll get clarification as to when that's going to be, so you can stick around if you're here for that to find exactly when, or you can, you can check with Palma if you don't, if anyone's here for that, you don't want to stick around.
Yeah, Leo, his request was to postpone it the next month.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to make that official announcement tonight, the Cratchman application, 364 North Rumpson Avenue, which is block 619, lot 3.02, that's also going to be June 26th at 7:00 p.m. In this room, the applicant will not be required to republish or renotice, so if you're here for that, you're welcome to stay, but you don't need to, it's not going to be heard tonight.
Okay, our next case is Jerry Slippikoff, 346 North Rumpson Avenue, block 619, lot 14, located in the S-40 waterfront zoning district, seeking C-variants relief for sideyard setback, a second curb cut, and potentially others in order to raise and renovate the existing single-family home. Colonel Taxes, Water, and Sewer Payments, proof of advertising and notification provided, represented by Christopher Ballinson.
All right, and I'll get Mr. McLaren sworn in. Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you'll give throughout this evening, it'll be the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I'll lead us off, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and welcome new board members to your indoctrination of the Margate City Planning Board. My report is based on the application of Jerry Slippikoff at 346 North Rumpson Avenue, block 619, lot 14, located in the S-40 WF Zone, seeking C-variants, planning and zoning report incomplete, hardship and substantial benefit variances are part of the testimony, C-1 and C-2 criteria. Background is as follows, variances are being requested for existing non-conforming sideyard setbacks, including the aggregate setback. The proposal was to elevate an existing single-family dwelling and add a half-story above the parking which is permitted. A second curb cut is being requested to accommodate additional parking below the structure requiring a variance. All landscape requirements are to be met as per the ordinance. A terrace sideyard is proposed as the city's ordinance encourages filling the land in tidal prone areas along bulkheads. A retaining wall is required to contain the earth to prevent runoff from occurring to adjacent properties, and that is shown quite nicely on the plan. I'll go through the variances, and again, my conversation with the board attorney said there's going to, or not the board attorney, the applicant's attorney, that there's some modifications which makes some of these variances more palatable. So on page two, in the zoning chart, highlighted in yellow or gray, if you use a black and white printer, are the variances required or requested and identified. Page three, section two are the documents reviewed, including the plans received and reviewed. Page four are the variances required in section three, sideyard setback to the dwelling on the left side, whereas 10 feet is a minimum required sideyard setback, 5 feet exists and 5 feet is proposed. Again, they're adding two small spaces on that, within that 5-yard setback or 10-yard setback that require variances. Sideyard setback to the dwelling combined, whereas 37% of the lot width of the 22 feet is a minimum required combined sideyard setback, 20 feet exists and 20 feet is proposed. So they're two feet short, and again, there's little areas that they're filling in on the first or second floor, depending which section it is. And curb cuts, number of curb cuts, whereas one curb cut is permitted per single-family dwelling, one exists and two are proposed. Again, the existing curb cut is 16 feet wide, and I think they're going to reduce that down so they have two 10-foot wide curb cuts. I'm not going to go through all my comments, but again, this is a waterfront lot, part of the land or part of the lot is actually in the water, that's identified as riparian, so they are, they don't have the lot depth that they would need to stack parking the way you could normally stack the parking. I turn it over to Mr. Ballinson.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, welcome to the new members.
Chris, you got...
Congratulations, sorry about a second.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think they're, they, there's a 26-foot curb cut now, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're going to make that 6...
I'll go through that for you in about one minute.
Yeah, but is it going to be 16 or 10?
10.
10, oh, it is going to be 10, all right, good. And then, Chris, for you, if they weren't doing these two things, are they going up high enough that it would require that over 3 feet then?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand that, new board members?
State law allows a property, I think Johanna had the same issue with her property, where if you have an existing non-conforming setback or bulk standard that you're going above DFE plus 3, any existing nonconformities require a variance per state law. If you're at 3 or less, you don't have that requirement.
Which is, what is applicable tonight?
If you weren't even putting an addition on, they'd be here anyway.
For the curb cuts. Right, okay. My name is Chris Ballinson, I represent Mr. Slippikoff, who's here this evening, he's the owner of 346 North Rumpson Avenue, identified in the tax map as lot 14 and block 619, the S-40 zoning district, it's an existing single-family home that is, it's short in terms of its lot depth because of its waterfront location. So when we talk about the parking, traditionally, you would see, most of the time, you'd see three cars stacked. You'd say, well, why do you need a second curb cut? You have, you can stack three cars. Because of the short lot and the existing structure, three cars won't fit stacked. So, what's happening tonight is, the existing home, Mr. Slippikoff uses primarily the garage for storage, because the house otherwise has no storage, so he has the two spaces in the 26-foot curb cut at the front of the house. The genesis of the project started with the idea to get a second garage so we could actually use a garage for his car, still have the storage, and recognizing he had to lift the house to do that. So he's decided to go ahead and do that, lift the house, add a second garage, at the same time, add a brand-new bulkhead at the property, which is not required, but that's going to be part of this project. As the chairman said, where we leave off is this. Right down there is a substantial curb cut of 26, 24 feet at far left side of the property, goes almost right to the corner of the property. That's going to be eliminated in favor of your plan shows a 16-foot driveway there, that's, we're going to change that to a 10-foot driveway. So that's going to be a single-loaded driveway with the garage behind it. The second driveway is proposed to the right of that single-loaded driveway, also 10 feet, your plan shows 12, it's going to be 10, so the two 10-foot driveways, with the garage and the car in front. What does that, what does that do for us? Number one, with respect to the driveways, we go from a total of 24 now, down to 20, so we're reducing the opening on the street by four feet. Currently, in this stretch right here, you have two on-street spaces. With the second curb cut, Mr. Patterson, we maintain two on-street spaces, probably one in, one between the curb cuts, and there's a 20-foot space right here. John Barnhart will tell you, we also pick up four feet here, and since this neighbor's driveway is on the other side of the house, it's going to open up that to some, probably an additional space, probably, I can't, no promises. But so, on-street parking is maintained, we may pick up a space here, but predominantly, what this does is picks up off-street parking. Now with the four spaces off-street, where previously there was three. That's, that's the variance that drives the application. The setback variance you'll see is, this addition here is the existing setback of 5 feet versus 10 feet, that's really just a column to support the house when it's raised. This little piece right here is an expansion of the master bedroom, master bathroom at the second floor, at the same existing setback, it really falls in line with roofline. If you look on the photographs, it's kind of, architect, Mr. Asher, has done a real nice job of kind of blending that in with the existing roofline, so they can expand the master bathroom, put it, it might be a powder, powder room right now, I think, gets a shower in there. And that's, that's it, that's the application. We reduce, we reduce the on-street curb openings, we pick up off-street parking, I think it's a positive, and of course you get the house up, reflect, prevention. With that, Mark Asher and John Barnhart can be sworn in at the same time, they can correct what I said, whatever you say.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart and Mr. Asher, just give us your name and business address for the record, I'll swear the two of you in together.
Sure. John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
Okay.
Mark Asher, 115 West Avenue, Suite 305, Jenkentown, Pennsylvania.
Okay, and if you need, if you can each please raise your right hand, you each swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening, it'll be the truth.
I do.
I do.
And Mr. Barnhart, engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and Mr. Asher, an architect, will accept their credentials?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Asher, if you would briefly describe what Mr. Slippikoff paid you for, and ultimately what you've done and enables that to happen.
Well, you know, sometimes it is a simple project, and this is one. This is a house that's, it's really well-designed, but it's 20 years old, so it's hitting the end of its cycle, a lot of exterior maintenance issues, and some things dated. So we are taking this house, wrapping it in a new skin, updating the aesthetic just a little bit, and lifting the house for, of course, flood elevation purposes. So that's the essence of the project, and then, of course, what happens is we're, we're trying to get more parking, as will be discussed, the curb cut and all that, you know, so now we have dualing garages, which we're getting, I hate to put it as whether we want to or not, but that's what we're getting because the core of the house is elevators and stairs and structures and so on, so we really don't have the opportunity for a double-wide. So, so the two garages flanking the center of the house, which now become real garages, as Chris mentioned, because we can pull all of the, the storage out of those garages and put them into the middle storage rooms underneath the house. So, again, the space lift, lift, new parking, and then just some housekeeping additions. As mentioned, there's this structural pier here that brings the house down to the ground, this is, I think, on your drawings and documented here, and then there's a small insert that just extends the roofline here, just to make the master bathroom a little more, more modern.
Both of those additions meet the existing setbacks, no further approach it?
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah, so, you know, the house, you know, coverages and setbacks and all those things, of course, remain the same, and it's just, you know, essentially a straight lift.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Asher, a question.
Yes.
On the, on the pavers in front of the driveways.
Yes.
Are they going to be the same 10-foot wide, both of them? Because one's 14 now or 16?
It's going to be 10.
Thank you.
John, you're off to prepare the site plan and the variance plan?
Yes, we prepared a number of plans of this project.
But would you take the board through the plan and what requires a variance and discuss the variances?
Sure. So, this exhibit that Mr. Asher's already prepared is a perfect explanation.
John, just try to get closer to the microphone, we're still limited to the one microphone right here.
No problem, can you hear me better here?
Yes, thank you.
This is the perfect comparison of existing versus proposed conditions. The left side is the existing conditions plan of the site, you can see, as was discussed, the existing driveway has a two-car wide driveway, and then just a single-car garage, or call it a garage, a car and a half garage, but it's really not functional for parking purposes because it is the, is the only storage that Mr. Slippikoff currently has. The house footprint is in the oriented area, there is a pool in the rear yard, a rear deck, a ground floor, or a ground level, I should say, patio area, and then, Mrs. Slippikoff has a deck area that was permitted some years ago by the DEP, and then dock structures. The project is, as Mr. Asher described, is a total overall of the, of the building, but is also a total renovation of the site itself as well. So in the proposed condition, Mr. Slippikoff is, is, is planning to build a brand-new bulkhead for the entire width of this property, up to the current elevation as per market ordinance. What he's trying to accomplish, which we're working through some issues with regard to the DEP, but he's actually trying to accomplish getting the DEP to allow him to move the deck over, to kind of give some relief to his neighbor, and also align with his, with his proposed pool area. You would think that would be an easy task, but if you work with the DEP, you recognize that it's not an easy task, so we're working through that. We may not achieve that, but what we are trying to accomplish that. The pool area, the rear deck, all that is brand-new to work with the elevation of the new bulkhead. We are proposing to comply in all regards, with regard to the setback of our rear decks and patio areas. The only deviation that we're asking for, which has been described by both Mr. Asher and Mr. Ballinson, is the two little red shaded areas that you see here with the building coming up, having, and having a little bit of additional living space or usable space, which you can also see in this rendering that I'm pointing to here, and then at the ground level, there's a column, because if you look at the existing condition of the building, which actually you can see in this picture, you can see that that ground level at that corner actually kind of a cantilever, they're trying to create a better balance for the building on that side, so there's a column that will now come down to the ground at that area. Because, because the existing plane of the building is non-conforming, those two pieces of the puzzle generate a sideyard setback variance, and then they also generate the combined sideyard setback variance because it, the existing condition does not comply with the combined...
That front element, that's really a supporting structure, and just start to square off the building and eliminate that cutouts.
Correct, it's, it's to help with the structural support and the aesthetic of the building, correct. So that's it with regard to the, with regard to the actual variances that are necessary for the, for the lift and the modification of the home. The parking scenario and the reason for the curb cut, you've heard Mr. Asher describe, and also Mr. Ballinson, because of the depth of the lot, Mr. Slippikoff was trying to accomplish as much parking as possible. He, he has a number of family members that come down on the weekends, and so he's trying to get as much off-street parking as he can, but, but we did do it, try to do it in a fashion that doesn't create a negative impact on the on-street parking. So, what was developed is a, is, as was already described, with, as modified, a 10-foot wide curb cut to a, to an exterior space, and then an interior garage space, and then another 10-foot wide curb, curb cut with an exterior space and an interior garage space once again. We unfortunately don't have the ability, like many homes do, to maybe triple-stack cars to get that additional space, so the idea is to be able, is to have the second curb cut, get four off-street parking spaces on the property. What that also does is still allows for very large ground floor storage areas, so Mr. Slippikoff has full intention of being able to use these parts, these spaces for parking, and that is the goal here because of the fact that he will have that additional storage. So the key to the curb cut issue is on-street parking, you know, how are we affecting that? So what we took a look at is the neighboring properties and how we are, and what our, what our net impact is on parking. Our frontage right now has about 56 feet of open, open vertical curb, which by standards is two nicely sized or oversized parking spaces in front of Mr. Slippikoff's property, which currently, and I've visited Mr. Slippikoff a number of times at this site, currently generally, his additional cars are the ones parking there because he only has two off-street spaces right now. When, with, when the proposed condition, we have next to us, from our, from our existing curb cut over to the next, the next neighbor's driveway, it's just shy of 40 feet, so it's kind of two spaces, but if you park wrong or you park a big car, it's really one space. When we reduce our curb cut, which is 24 feet now, we're, we're giving the majority of that space to that side, so we will have almost 46 feet there, so we will really legitimately have two nicely sized spaces between our driveway and our neighboring driveway to the left.
So with the 8 feet, with the 8 feet we're providing on that side of the driveway, it just goes really to legal spaces next door, closely to legal feet?
Legal and appropriately sized and very easily usable, correct.
John?
Yes.
John, does the 28 feet change because we had 16 feet before, and you're going 10? You're giving three and three on each side of that garage door?
So when you say the 28...
28 between the garage, between the curb cuts. 28 feet you have, so you're making it smaller, so will that give us 31 feet?
For some reason, I'm losing you, what's the 28 feet?
It's right here.
Between the curb, between the curb cuts.
You have my between the new curb cuts?
Yes.
Yeah, that will go to actually 31, 31 feet forward.
Kind of go to 31, and you pick up three feet.
Correct, yes, that is correct. So that also becomes a very, very nicely sized parking space.
Yeah.
And then, it's, albeit it would be a smaller space, you, in all likelihood, a person will be able to fit a car on the other side of our proposed, of our proposed parking, our proposed driveway. So, we're looking at this from a, from an on-street parking perspective as a, as a no-net difference. We're improving upon the spaces to our left, we still have a space in front of us, and you're still going to be able to get a car adjacent to the new driveway, so we believe it's a no-net difference, but the benefit is that we go from two off-street parking spaces on our site to four off-street parking spaces on our site. So, from a parking perspective, if you balance the positives and negatives, we think that this is a positive to this block because of how the driveways have laid out.
And to the right of the second new, the new driveway, that's, I mean, that's a 20-foot space.
Correct, that is correct.
Right, yes, by, by going to 10-foot, you increase the landscape.
Correct, in the curb strip, yes, and on the property itself as well.
No, well, it was 16, now you're going down to 10.
That is correct, that is correct, yes. So, there are the variances, that is the application. This is, this is one of those cases where we think that Mr. Slippikoff, in working with Mr. Asher's office, has done an extremely good job of creating a tasteful design that does not have a negative impact on, on either of their neighbors or this block in general. So, based on that, we believe that the variances can be granted under the C-2 criteria, where the benefits of the deviation outweigh any of the detriments. The benefits being we're bringing a project into, into, into flood compliance, we're increasing, we're creating a net increase of parking in this block, albeit some of it's on, on-site, but that's, you know, that takes another car off the street that happens to go under Mr. Slippikoff's cars. So for those reasons, we believe that the benefits of this project outweigh any of the potential detriments.
I forget, Mr. Asher, the aesthetic enhancements that we anticipated? I forget, Mr. Asher, the aesthetic enhancements that we anticipated and suspect is also addressing positive criteria?
That's correct. The purpose of zoning, um, as you know, in the Miss Land use law is creation of a desirable visual environment. Um, this, while it's currently a, a very nice home, um, Mr. Asher's design will take it to, to, to the, to another level. It'll be an absolutely beautiful, uh, structure when it is complete. With regards to the negative criteria, is there a substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance? Um, with the reduction in the curb cuts, we only have a total of twenty feet of total curb cut. We believe that's a, that's a, a very minor request, and as I discussed with regard to the side yard setback, it's an existing condition. So, for those reasons, we don't believe there's a substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance, and the, the second problem with the negative criteria is there a substantial detriment to the public good. Based on my description of how the parking will work, which we think is really the only potential negative impact to the, to the neighbors or the public, we believe there is no detriment whatsoever to the public good.
And the, the on-street, the on-street curb line actually increases. I mean, there is twenty-foot curb cut down where there's twenty-four.
There would be a net increase in vertical curb as a result of this. That is correct. And that's all I have.
Board members, that's all we have for this evening. I think this is actually a positive application. This is actually a better, a benefit for the neighborhood, even with the second curb cut. Because of the increase, we think of on-street parking and off-street parking, and the additions, the additions to the house are nominal marginal effects. Um, you get a flight compliant house, you get a new bulkhead, improved additional flood impact, um, and pick up off, off-street parking. You think it's a, it's a good application. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. The, uh, the mechanicals on the right-hand side for the, the pool and the air conditioning, whatever, they don't count against side yard setback?
No. They have their own setback requirements.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any, uh, questions or comments? Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay. Public portion's closed.
All right. There's no further questions. Uh, we need a motion and a second for the following, uh, it's three C variances, and those are the side yard setback on the left side, ten feet's the requirement, five is proposed, side yard setback, the combined side yard setback, about twenty feet's, twenty-two feet's the requirement and twenty feet's proposed, and then the curb cuts here allowed one, they're proposing two. In terms of conditions, I'll note that they'll be ten feet each, uh, the curb cuts, and the other conditions will just be the, the standard, standard conditions we put in pretty much every resolution, subject to any outside approvals. It sounds like you're working with CAFRA. Um, applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing, and then, uh, anything else in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed tonight.
All right, the street, you mentioned street trees. There's two street trees now. They're overgrown and protruding through the sidewalk. They're gonna be removed and replaced with nu- nu- with new trees.
Okay.
And the governor's strip's fine, so no problem.
One quick question. Uh, Mark, are you gonna put gutters and dance bats on this property? I, I don't see them on the plan. If you do, could you redirect them through the bulkhead?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, I don't think the house has gutters now, but it does.
Okay.
It was, uh, too spiffy designed for gutters.
So, as a, as a condition, any stormwater will be directed toward the bay down the street.
Right.
But now we have to care about those things.
Okay. Need a motion, a second, then a roll call vote.
I'll second.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think this is a substantial benefit to the neighborhood, besides the fact that you're raising the house and getting it out of the flood zone. Um, you're gonna ha- we're gonna have four parking spaces off-street, um, and you're gonna have enough storage now that you can actually, you don't have to use your garage as storage. There's plenty of storage there to put, you know, whatever you're gonna put in there. Um, yeah, I think the, um, the setback, the, the small additions are de minimis, and, uh, I'm gonna vote to approve it.
Richard Patterson?
Well, if this was new construction, I'd have a problem with it, but it's an existing house. Uh, the center of the house is already set, so you can't have a double garage on one side. Uh, other than that, I agree with, uh, the chairman, and you're increasing the parking spaces, and I approve the application.
Craig Palmasano?
Uh, yeah. I agree with, um, our chairman. Uh, when, when you went to the ten feet on the, um, driveways, that, that was a big plus for me. That was, the one sticking point was the curb cuts, and with the center stairway, you can't do much of, much about that with an existing home, and you are raising it, and, uh, I approve.
Rich Tolson?
Having driven, can you hear me, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Having driven by the property today with the plans, the vis- the changes made, there'll be no visual detriment from the street. There is improved parking, consideration of the neighbors in regards to the rear deck over the bay is worth noting, and I believe it'd be an overall upgrade to the neighborhood, so I will vote in favor.
Johanna Persky?
Um, I agree with what everyone else said. It's not easy to raise a home on lots, larger size, and I think it's appropriately done, so I agree.
Herb Bazagno?
I agree with everyone else. Nice enhancement to the neighborhood.
Steven Jasecki?
Yeah, I agree. You, um, you addressed all the concerns that I think were necessary, and, uh, as Rich was saying, if it was a new house, um, you addressed the flooding and, uh, the off-street parking. I think that is, um, a positive for the city. I approve.
Drew Campbell?
I as well think it's an overall upgrade, um, to the neighborhood, and anytime we can increase off-street parking, that's a plus for the city and the neighbors. So, I agree. I approve.
And John Pitts?
Nothing to add. I approve.
Mr. Incarries, nine in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. Our next case is Robert Warham, three oh five North Harding Avenue, block five, twenty-four point zero two, lot eleven, located in the TF zoning district, seeking C-variance relief for front yard setback, front yard landscape coverage, and potentially others to construct a new front porch and deck. Criminal taxes, water and sewer payments, proof of advertising and notification provided, represented by Christopher Ballson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'll lead off for, uh, a little brief synopsis. I wish I had a dollar for every house that we had that came in for the same thing on, in this area. My report is based on the application of Rob- Robert Warham, three oh five North Harding Avenue, block five, twenty-four point zero two, lot eleven, located in the TF zone or two-family, and is se- seeking C-variance relief. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to construct two new porch and deck for the first floor and the second floor, because the decks do not meet the prevailing setbacks. So, the decks and porches within two hundred feet, variances are required. Deemed complete, it's a substantial benefit variance. Locate on page two is the zoning chart, and I've identified three separate variances. Go to page three, documents reviewed and the plans reviewed to demo- to, uh, create this report. Section three are the variances required. One is the front yard setback to the porch, first floor porch, whereas prevailing front yard setback is ten point three eight feet, eight point five feet exist, and six point one feet is proposed. Uh, front yard setback to the second floor, whereas the prevailing front yard setback is ten point three eight feet, and six one, six point one feet is proposed. And again, as, as, as a result of encroaching into the front yard setback, uh, you have a front yard reduction in landscape coverage, whereas six percent of the frontage is required, have a minimum of sixty percent. Thirty-nine point two four percent exists, and twenty-four point two four percent is proposed, requiring a variance. And if you look on the zoning chart, I do believe that overall, they, they, they comply with, uh, they had forty, almost forty-seven percent landscape coverage and are down to forty-three percent. So, they're not losing, they're not going below the overall, just the front yard setback. So, again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ballson.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ballson, my name's Chris Ballson. I represent Mr. Warham. He's here tonight. He's the owner of three oh five North Harding Avenue, it's block five twenty-four point zero two, lot eleven, in the multi-family zone. Um, I, I said in March on the state of the neighborhood because I think it's, it, it needs not only this, it needs more, but that's, that's, topic for another day. We, we, we have Harding, Harding Avenue and Wilson Avenue, Winchester Avenue and Fulton Avenue, with the same, same post-war duplexes, look exactly the same in that whole entire area. I think they should be allowed to rebuild those duplexes on those lots even though they're too small. And when the bayfront's taken off now, that would be a wonderful, wonderful gateway, but they can't. So, what do you do? You try and make it look a little bit better. You try and get yourself a little bit of outside living space. What's proposed tonight is what we've talked about half a dozen times, is, is, this, Mr. Warham's duplexes has never been touched. There's not even a front porch on it. Just stoop in the front from whatever was built, and that's it. So, what, what is proposed is a seven-foot, ten-inch-deep first floor porch, seven-foot, ten-inch-deep second floor deck, which encroaches in the front yard setback, which is required to be ten point eight three feet, and it's six point one feet. You, you have a ten point eight three foot front yard setback in that neighborhood to a porch. It just shows you the lack of porches in that neighborhood, and I mean, that's a substantial setback to, to a porch, usually to a house, but it doesn't make, you still have six, a six-foot setback with, with the addition of these, of this deck and this porch. You know, Margate has a minimum of five. Um, that's easily met, but this remains at six point one. Um, as a result of the addition of the outside space by virtue of the deck and the porch, um, front yard landscaping falls under what's required, but lot landscaping easily meets the requirement. It's still forty-two percent versus thirty-five percent required. Uh, and Mr. McLaren, there's no problem adding grass in the front, no problem adding the street trees that you're asking for and the bushes. Mr. Warham is all about beautifying the property, and this is one step toward it. Variances are required to that setback and to the front yard landscaping setback. Um, Bob?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, just give us your name and business address, please.
Uh, Robert D. Reynolds, Jr., uh, registered architect, state of New Jersey, uh, one oh nine I.
Mr. Reynolds is the president of this court before we accept his credentials as a registered architect?
Yes.
Yeah, I just gotta swear, man. Mr. Reynolds, uh, do you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth? Thank you.
Bob, you prepared the plan that was submitted to the board and, uh, is, uh, under consideration by them?
Yes.
Does you have anything to add to what I said?
Just get closer to the microphone. I'm sorry. We're very limited.
I've really done, Chris, um, I have provided.
Bob, 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 can you talk, get closer to the microphone?
I have provided a landscape, uh, planning schedule to, um, to add a little bit more green on the, uh, front el- uh, front side of the property.
That's where Mr. Ballson pointed out, with washstone there now?
Yes.
So, that's gonna be replaced with, wait a second.
Everything green.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, actually, um, the stone was also on the governor's strip.
And that's what you changed?
We're gonna add two street trees. Uh, recommended species to be, uh, lemon lane tree, sycamore, sycamore maple or, um, October glory red maple.
Okay, Bob, do you think that the addition of the deck and the porch enhances the look of this property as compared to the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes, um, yes, I do, Chris. It also provides some, um, outdoor space. Um, there's a precedent on, uh, the two hundredth block of Harding Avenue that I'm familiar with, that there's, uh, porches similar to this, uh, that, uh, were constructed in recent years.
And when you're saying you're just in the outside living space, that, having your building be outside on the front porch, you, you, that kind of encourages neighborhood their act.
It encourages.
Holding, like a more neighborhood feeling at long time.
Yes, it does. Um, it's also, um, you know, you catch the, the breezes, um, you know, very much different than living offshore or out in the mainland or having.
Or in there without, or, or there without a deck.
Yeah. I mean, as far as, uh, catching breezes and, uh, the coolness.
Do you think there's, and, and you think there's a substantial detriment to the board elect, to the public good, to the board allow the deck porch?
No, I, I, I think the board should, uh, consider, uh, especially with, um, uh, the stoop right now is, is very small. It's not even really comfortable to have a, a chair out there. Uh, but this area, it's much more gracious, will, uh, in, in, in terms of the space where you could have a couple of chairs out there.
And since the front yard setback and more than sixteen is maintained, you think there's any substantial impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
No, I, I think actually it's a benefit, um, in new deck construction, combined with the new landscaping. I think it, it'll make, um, uh, the property, uh, that much more improved, and I, I think it would be, uh, a benefit to, uh, the overall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. That's all we have.
Aren't the two properties to the left going towards the bay? They look like they already have porches, right?
Right.
Yeah. Are they pretty much the same size as what we're talking about?
Pretty much. Everybody that's done them, pretty much does, just think seven and a half feet, eight foot, that, off the bottom of the house.
Okay.
Pretty soon all of them will stay in there.
I'm assuming that besides, um, putting the decks on, you're gonna, uh, do some exterior renovation siding or, yeah, here and that here?
Yes, if that, Mr. Richardson, yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks.
So, Chris?
Yes.
You said the, the porch is gonna be how, how wide?
Seven feet, ten inches, in the width of the zone. First reach, seven feet, ten inches from, from the face of the zone.
Here, here's the little issue that I have.
Sure.
Where you, where you live, with that area, it's prone to flooding, and, um, I'm really big in trying to get as much permeable land as we can, and we'd, we'd be taking a little bit more away from that. And I know I have a friend of mine that lives down there, and he, his porch is six feet wide. I like the concept of having a porch, but I was wondering if you could shrink down that.
I, I, I think under these circumstances, Mr. Richardson, we're, we're gonna ask for the seven feet, ten inches, cause it's designed the way the board, the way the ordinance requires it to be, so it, it's permeable, and the rain wouldn't go through it between the boards.
Yeah, I know, but a lot, a lot of that still goes down.
If it goes in there, I mean, this, this six-foot depth doesn't, doesn't really give you the ability, for example, chairs out there. It's, it's just kind of, I don't wanna say pointless, it's not pointless, but it's, if, if it goes in the cost of the space, you might as well be using it.
I understand, but you, you understand what my.
I have, I have to.
Chris, you're not gonna cement under the deck, right?
No, no, no.
So, it'll still be permeable under the. Will the stones be removed underneath?
Yes, yes.
How about the coconut?
Governor's strip's being, re- governor's strip's being replanted with grass. The, um, area of the front yard in front of the deck will all be replanted with bushes and grass. Stones will go away everywhere.
Under the deck will be saved.
Correct, correct.
I have a question.
Yeah.
There's a tree now in your front yard.
That, the tree on the left side?
A nice sized tree, yes.
It's actually impacting the foundation. The way it's, you see it's growing right up against the side of the house?
Okay.
It's, it's affecting the foundation that, and it's growing across the front of the house. I don't think you can do this project with.
You'd have to take the tree down, in other words.
How wide's the governor's strip?
How wide is it there?
Wide enough for, for Steve to.
Yeah, trees, there's a tree there now.
I know that, but, but sometimes those governor's strips are really.
Well, it's too narrow, Steve. They won't put it there. We'll put it behind the side.
They'll put it on the, on the, on the inside of the property line. But there's one there now. About thirty inches?
Anyone else from the, uh, board have any questions or comments?
Just to be clear, you are over on landscape coverage. You mean?
For the lot, yes.
Right.
Right.
And the second floor deck is actually fiberglass, right? So.
Correct.
Is there, is there gonna be, um, requirements on what they plan out there, or is that just, do they have to plan a certain amount of?
It's, it's the number of shrubs.
Number of shrubs, uh, right. I know, I know what you're saying, Steve, about the permeable space, but at this, on, on the other hand, they are gonna be doing a lot of plannings and things like that, which overall, nature. and things like that, which overall, nature-wise, I think contributes to that area. That's coming better than it is now with stone and nothing, so. Uh, that's my opinion. Anyway, um, anyone else on the board? Anyone from the public? Public portion's closed.
Okay, it's a, it's another C variance application, Roger. In terms of conditions, on the revised plans, will you just add a landscaping plan that, that you can?
Yeah, Rob reached out to me last night and, uh, said that he will comply, and I believe he has a planning schedule on there.
Yeah, it looks like it, okay. So as a condition approval, we'll, we'll, we'll just note that you'll, uh, implement the landscaping as represented to be reviewed by Mr. McLaren.
Yeah, and you, and you can note that the area under the deck will be a permeable surface, it will, it will likely be sand.
And deck four is, it won't be.
And deck four is a drain as required. No, it's, it'll have a spa, it has to have spacing.
All right, so the, the, the variances are the following, and I'll summarize them. The front yard setback to the, to the porch, the first floor porch, six point, six point one feet's proposed, where ten point three eight feet is the requirement. Same thing for the, the deck above it on the second floor, six, six point one foot front yard setback where ten point three eight feet's required. And then front yard landscaping, uh, sixty percent's required. And they're gonna be at twenty-four point two four percent in terms of the conditions. I'll note that, you know, the area un, under the deck will be a per, permeus, permeable material. They'll implement, um, the recommendations in terms of landscaping, uh, set forth in Mr. McLaren's report. And they'll submit revised plans for, for Roger to review and approve. And then the, the standard conditions subject to any other, uh, outside approvals that may be necessary and subject to any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing. So we'll need a motion, a second, and a roll call.
I'll make that motion.
Michael Richmond?
I think the decks are in improvements in the neighborhood. Again, I understand that we're gonna lose a little bit of permeable space, but I think that by, abiding by the, uh, planning schedule, that'll really, and, you know, doing the other renovations to the property, I think that'll really upgrade the neighborhood and, um, so I'm gonna approve it.
Richard Patterson?
We've consistently approved these, uh, like Chris said, I think it's at least a half a dozen that we've approved. Uh, I see no reason why this one's any different. Uh, it makes the neighborhood more livable, it's, it's an upgrade to the looks of the neighborhood. Makes conversations between neighbors better, and I don't see any detriment, so I approve the application. And we're also, have been talking about in the master plan for this area, making some changes to make it easier to put these decks in without.
Craig Palmisano?
On those two streets, there happen to be about ninety-nine of these buildings, and they're seventy-five years old. And this is a big improvement, this one looks like it hasn't had any work done in seventy-five years. And, um, it's a big improvement, we've done others on the street, like Rich said. Um, it's outdoor living, it's a southerly sea breeze in the summertime. I lived in one when I first got married, and they're so small. Two bedrooms, one bath, and a small living room and a small kitchen. Outdoors, to get outdoors, another room is tremendous, I approve.
Rich Tolson?
I don't think I could add anything beyond that, I will vote you approve, approve.
Johanna Persky?
Uh, I think the improvements in the neighborhood with the addition of strawberries is gonna be a major enhancement, I approve.
Herb Pizagno?
That's gonna be some nice improvements, I approve.
Sam Friedman?
Uh, I, I do approve, um, I think it, it, uh, increases the usability of the, of the structure itself. It will be a shame to lose that old growth tree, so I mean, I would, it's important that, that, uh, the landscaping schedule, uh, is abided by and, and, uh, but I, I do approve.
Patty Rosenberg?
Um, is this on? Yes, it is. It's on, it's on. Um, I, I approve, I think, um, having a front porch, uh, is a neighborly thing to do and, uh, brings neighbors together, and it's an improvement to the, to the building. And with the addition of the planting schedule, that's a vast improvement over what's there now, even with the loss of that one tree.
John Pitts?
Uh, yeah, there's several homes on the two hundred block that we talked about that have this, uh, front porch and, uh, it's a dramatic improvement to the neighborhood, having those front porches. Mr. Richmond asked about, uh, other improvements that are being made to the property, I was glad to hear that that's going forward, uh, so I approve, and good luck.
Motion carries, nine in favor and zero vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next case is Roy and Joanne Goldberg, four North Nassau Avenue, block two fifteen, lot nineteen, located in the S forty zoning district, seeking C variance relief for front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, building coverage, total landscape coverage, and potentially others to enclose the existing front porch. Current on taxes, would are in sewer payments, proof of advertising and notifications provided representative by Christopher Ballen.
Okay. Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, my report is based on the application of Roy and Joanne Goldberg, four North Nassau Avenue, block two one five, lot nineteen, located in the S forty zoning district, seeking C variance relief, planning zone report, substantial benefit variance. Again, I, Mr. Chairman read off the reasoning, said the background is the same. Page two is a zoning chart. Uh, you see there's two items highlighted, uh, that require variances, page three, there are documents reviewed and the continuation of the zoning chart. Page four are the plans reviewed, uh, waivers required, none requested. Two variances are front yard setback to the building, whereas a required minimum setback to principal buildings based on the prevailing setback is thirteen point four four feet, seventeen point two feet exists, and eight point three feet is proposed. Side yard setback to the principal structure, since the porch is being enclosed, the setback to the porch now becomes part of the principal structure, whereas a required minimum side yard setback to the principal structure is ten feet, five point six feet exists, and seven point four two feet is proposed for the enclosed porch. So the footprint of the, if you're at the ten thousand feet up in the air, you're looking down, it's not changing. It's what, the, the walls are being added that changes. So I'm not gonna go through all my comments. Mr. Ballen and I did have a couple of discussions on this project, uh, in the last few days, and I'll leave it up to him to discuss with the board some modifications or clarifications, uh, going forward. Mr. Ballen.
Thank you, uh, board members. I represent, Chris Ballen, I represent Roy and Joanne Goldberg, who are here, uh, tonight. Have four North Nassau Avenue, it's block two fifteen, lot nineteen, in the S forty zoning district. This is a, in terms of, nothing's ever simple, but it's an easy plan to understand. The house currently has a front porch behind six columns, four columns. Which if you've seen it, you look at it, the way it sits now, you have to access it through the living room. Uh, it's a fireplace in the middle of it, it's kinda setback, it's a little dark, and it's not, in terms of a front porch usable for, it's not optimal. The idea is to enclose it to enlarge the living room, to give them more fa, family space. It's not a huge house, it's only a three-bedroom house. Um, this just gives them more grandkid space, more kid space, um, for their family. Because it's an existing part of the house, it's actually, Roger pointed out, it's an existing part of the house. It's, there's a block foundation for this, there are columns, uh, it's, it's real, it's not just a frame structure put on the front of the house. So to include the walls or add the walls, it will look, it can look as if it was there. And that's the idea, the idea is that Mr. Reynolds came up with, the idea is to make sure those columns are structurally, still structurally sufficient and, and leave a half column look at the front of the house, to kind of maintain that parkway, duck floral style of the house and not take away from it. Have, have longer windows in the front, as opposed to, you know, typical double hungs, to lend that appearance to that parkway, parkway style house sideways, duck floral. But to try and maintain that, although enclosing the space. Enclosing the space creates a side yard setback variance on, uh, the base side. It's about five, it's five, six now, it gets better, it goes to seven point four, where ten is required. And a front yard setback now, instead of the front yard setback being to the porch, that same number applies to this to the house. So the setback doesn't change, it's just now you, the porch setback as it currently exists is now the house setback. Although for all intents and purposes, with a porch like, a structural element like this, it's really part of the house as it is. Um, with that, I'm gonna have John Barnhart testify with respect to the, the two variances. Um, it's really straightforward, uh, somebody might pick up on the fact when they were there, that there's a gate across the driveway, that's being eliminated. So the driveway will be unaffected, and you have nice amount of off-street parking that, that'll, that'll remain unaffected. John?
All right, John, uh, since it's a new application, real quick, your name and address, please, business address.
John Barnhart, office address four hundred North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City. I'm a professional engineer, I'm a professional planner.
And please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
And we obviously accept your credentials, thanks.
Thank you.
John, you're familiar with the property, Mr. Richmond, just stop me here and repeat everything you have to question. Take it forward to the property and what they've claimed.
Sure, um, as Chris pointed out, this is a, uh, as simple cases go, this is a, we think, a very, very simple case. Um, that, you know, an existing two-story home on the, on the property, this is the, the first of block north on Nassau Avenue. Has a mixture of modestly sized homes on it, a lot of ha, houses that have been here, been there for some time. Block has a lot of character to it. Um, what's nice about this application is that Goldberg, they're trying to maintain that character, uh, by just, rather than tearing the house down and building a house that's, you know, nine feet in the air or what have you, they're trying to create a little bit more additional li, interior living space by maintaining this home. So it, their, their method of doing that is to take the existing porch and its existing footprint and just enclose the first level. The upper level has a, has a deck as well that will remain, um, that will not change. None of the setbacks on the site will change, um, the seven point, uh, four or seven foot five inch dimension that Chris mentioned, that is actually the existing dimension to the deck, or to the porch right now. Um, it just, it's just basically three walls and opening up an interior wall to create that space.
That setback, I'm sorry, that setback is actually, uh, greater than the house setback.
That is correct, that, yeah, the, the, the por, the existing porch and then the existing enclosure, we're fortunate enough to get the approval, is set in further than the, uh, actual house wall.
So it's about two and a half foot deficiency, it's seven, five versus ten?
Correct, correct. So what, what we looked at is, you know, does it meet the character of the neighborhood? If you drove this block, I think, or it's, it's very clear that this proposal does meet the character of this neighborhood. Um, there are another, number of other properties that, um, appear as though they, we had front porches at one time that enclosed them, so this kind of just follows that pattern. Um, what it also does is it allows a modestly sized house, uh, to be improved upon, um, but it doesn't require that house to be raised up and, and have a structure that has, you know, nine feet of, of solid ground floor elevation. It'll, it'll, um, while thankfully it's high enough that it is out of harm's way, um, it, it, the house, as far as the enclosure is concerned, is, it will be down at a, you know, I'll say a reasonable level above grade. Uh, additionally, you know, when you look at something like this right now, it's an open porch, but if you visit the site, what you'll see is, yeah, it might be an open porch, but the landscaping currently makes it almost like it's a closed porch. There's a lot of privacy hedge in the front of, of the structure, and even neighboring property, um, to our right, as you were look, if you were standing facing the house, to our right, has their own very tall, very mature evergreen hedge row right in the front. So to the extent that there was some concern of blockage of airlight and open space of our neighbors, our neighbors are looking for privacy clearly, um, with the hedge that they have there. So by the enclosure of this, of this ground floor will have no impact, uh, on that neighbor that might be trying to look down toward the beach. Um, so we believe, again, this is a very de minimis request, we think it can be, um, granted under the, uh, uh, the C two criteria, where the benefits of the deviation outweigh any of the potential detriments. Um, this type of modification allows this home to ma, to maintain its character and to fit in well with the neighborhood uh, as compared to a new, modern home that might not require any variances, um, but would probably more, be more out of character with the neighborhood than, uh, because of the, uh, because of the existing pattern of development, so.
Does it pick up down to two hundred square feet?
Uh, I think it's like two hundred and thirty-seven, I think is the number, yeah. It's roughly nine by twenty-four. Um, it was regarding the top, the negative criteria, um, we certainly think there's no substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance because the setbacks are existing, um, and with regard to the second problem of the negative criteria, uh, we do not believe that there is a, uh, substantial detriment to the public good, uh, for the reasons that I have already stated. So we think it is a very, very minor request, um, and it's the type of variance request that you wanna see all the time to be able to maintain these homes.
Thank you, that's all we have.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for clarification, uh, Mr. Ballen, you mentioned that the gate across the driveway was gonna be removed and, and when to have, the driveway would be unaffected, but in reality, the driveway is gonna be improved to become usable, correct? Just for clarification. And in our notes, um, you described the front porch being enclosed for use for the family.
Yes.
In our notes, it says porch into an office.
Paul, that's, that was on the original plan?
In what I've been given. It's a mistake, just. Okay, fair enough, I just wanted to make sure we were clear. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else on the board? Anyone from the public like to speak? Public portion is closed.
All right, there's no further questions, again, it's a C variance application, two variances. The front yard setback, uh, once they enclose the porch, it's a eight point three feet where thirteen point four four feet's the requirement, and then the side yard setback, uh, ten feet's the requirement, and, and to this enclosure, it'll be seven point four two feet. The conditions, um, um, at the removal of the gate in front of the driveway, and the standard conditions, any representations made by the app, on behalf of the applicant during the course of the hearing, subject to any other approvals that might be required. Anything else in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed on the record? Pretty much it, need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I, I approve it, I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood, I don't see any detriment to the neighbor. Um, I think Mr. Barnhart made a good point about, um, neighbors already have the, um, the shrubs that are, you know, uh, giving them some privacy, so again, I'm gonna approve the application.
Craig Palmisano?
I also approve the application, uh, it, it's a nice, nice looking project in addition to the house.
Richard Patterson?
Thank you. Uh, here's a case where we're saving a classic old Morgate house and not having a, a new out-of-character house for the neighborhood. And with this particular house, uh, I'm sure when it's done, nobody's gonna know that this addition was gonna, was, was done, that it's gonna blend in with the house as it is. I see no detriments, and I see preserving in all the houses as a benefit, so I approve this application.
Rich Tolson?
With the clarifications I received on my questions, I vote in favor.
Johanna Persky? Recuse or abstain?
Abstain, abstain, sorry.
Herb Pizagno?
I appro, I approve it, anytime you can, uh, enhance and keep the texture and architecture of what we have in Morgate, it's perfect. I approve.
Stephen Giuseppe?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree, um, saving the house, it's, um, I think, I think it's positive, so I, I approve.
Andrew Campbell?
Um, I don't have anything new to add that my fellow board members have already said, um, I approve.
John Pitts?
Uh, yeah, preserving a classic home, especially in the parkway section, uh, is a great effort. Uh, three of the four homes at the intersection of Nassau and Winchester basically have the same thing we're doing here with this home, I approve.
Motion carries, eight in favor, one abstain.
Thank you all very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, our last case is, um.
Yeah, for, for the last case, for, uh. Okay, our last case is, um, yeah, for, for the last case, for, uh, for the three, the three new board members were, were, uh, reconsidering something we considered a couple of months ago, so I'm gonna ask the three, are we doing anything else after?
No.
I think we're gonna discuss habits.
Okay. Yeah, you guys have to sit this, we're gonna sit this one out, the, the three, um, technically, we, technically, we make you sit in the front row or where, just, if you guys can just sit out there and then, yeah, we're revisiting something that we did, uh, so i- i- as I understand this application, just so the board's aware, um, this was before the board in March for a rear yard deck that, uh... Sorry? Yeah, just as a little background, uh, the applicants on this next application, uh, which is two oh six North Brunswick, they were here in March of twenty twenty-five, the March meeting, they were seeking a third floor deck, uh, facing the, the rear yard. We heard the application, we denied it, uh, seven to two, the seven noes were, I'm just gonna say her last name, so forgive me, Richmond, Patterson, Jasecki, Campbell, Tolson, Rosenberg and Pitts, and, uh, Adams and Palmisano were the two in favor of it, it was denied. Uh, Mr. Goldstein on behalf of the applicant, and, and we'll let him speak in a second, but he's filed what's called, which we don't, we don't see too often, but so that's why I'm giving you a little preamble, uh, uh, an application for reconsideration, and there is a procedure in the land use law that generally speaking says if the, i- i- if, if a decision was, was made based on fraud or a mistake, the applicants can, can ask the board for reconsideration. I don't think there's any allegation, while, while the applicant might disagree with the decision, that, that, that there was a mistake in the decision of the board, but the mistake, as I understand it, it was, there was two neighbors, or one neighbor, a husband and wife, uh, the Sandoles, Joseph and Linda, two eleven North Clarendon Avenue, um, they opposed the application. What I thought I was gonna see, and from, from what I understood, um, they were gonna come back before the board denied and say that the, they made a mistake in looking at the plans, and again, we'll, I'm speculating a little bit, we'll hear from Mr. Goldstein in a minute, um, and, 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 and we were, we're actually in favor of this, and based on that, um, is the board, based on that mistaken, apparently mistaken testimony, willing to reconsider this application? So I kinda just, wanna just give that by way of background, 'cause we don't see it, um, too often.
In your reference to municipal land use law where it could be revisited on mistaken law?
Sorry, microphone.
You're gonna fire me. In regards to your reference to the municipal land use law, talking about fraud or a mistake being made, is that on behalf of the board or testimony?
I- 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 it's, it's a bit unclear, but, but it's, it's Mr. Goldstein's position that the board's decision may have been made on mistaken testimony from a neighbor, and he's asked for reconsideration, so we gotta flush that out a little bit, probably.
So, yeah, so that would lead to my question, how the law reads whether or not it's the mistake of the board or testimony given.
I can clarify, Mr. Manos, it might be easier.
Yeah, well, well, go ahead.
Mr. Tolson's question, which is, it's not the mistake of the board, the board made its decision based upon the evidence that was before it. It's our position that the evidence was mistaken, so it's almost a theory of garbage in, garbage out. If the board gets a bit of, uh, evidence that it relies on that perhaps is incorrect, then you make a decision that, we're gonna hopefully hear in a little bit, was not based on all the true facts of what was going on, but rather a mistake of a witness. So it's not the board's problem, it's our problem.
Understood, and, and thank you for the clarification on both parts. Also making the assumption that our decision was made based on that testimony, correct?
Yeah, and, and it's my opinion, it's, it, y- you don't get a, a second bite at the apple, you don't get to, what they're proposing, which I don't think there's any, um, dispute, we deny, so you can't just come back and say, try and get a second bite at the apple. Well, he's, Mr. Goldstein's phrasing that says it's reconsideration based on this potentially mistaken testimony that the board may have considered a different, had it heard different testimony.
From what I understand, this little, isn't there also, if they do bring it before the board, doesn't there have to be some type of substantial change to the application? Or some type of change to the application? Because I, I think like that what we're talking about here so much is not this case, but we're talking about the law in general, which I'm not...
Well, generally speaking, I, I, I would agree, you do not get a second opportunity to present your case and try and convince the board that they should revote and
Right.
rule differently. In this situation, what he's saying is, the board's, possibly the board's decision was based on mistaken testimony from a neighbor, um, and had that testimony, if the board finds, you know, that that's credible, um, you know, a- and had that testimony been presented differently, the board may reconsider its decision. I think we should, go ahead.
Again, we're assuming it was mistaken testimony.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't know that yet, I, we'd have to hear from...
Mistaken or just changed their mind?
I, I, I have...
It's two different things, right?
We, we, we have to hear some, some on that, yeah, I mean, I think...
So, it, as I recall, isn't there like some kind of a, um, something in the zoning law that we, not to have third floor decks on the rear of the house? Is it third floor or the second floor?
Correct, and that's what he had, third floor, rear facing decks. That was the variance he asked for, and, and we denied it.
Right.
And...
Okay.
Right, no, you, you're, you're correct.
I mean, there's a reason not to have third floor decks, you know?
So would we be voting on whether to hear the case, or are we voting on, re- revoting on what we already voted on?
In light of the, what we hear, I, it's gonna be a question of whether the board is willing to reconsider its decision.
That would be the vote, are we gonna reconsider the, okay.
Okay, well, let's let Mr. Goldstein say what he needs to say, and then we'll, we'll proceed.
So just by way of background, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicants, Michael and Mandy Dorfman, and to kind of answer Mr. Chairman's question here, as far as the concept of res judicata, to the extent an application is made and then an applicant comes back after a denial without substantially changing it, then the board's decision is considered res judicata, which means the thing you've already voted on is done. So in this instance, you've voted no to an application. The last time this was before the board, there were members of the public, one of whom is to my left, who were adamantly opposed because they said this third floor deck would infringe upon their privacy, 'cause they are the directly behind the house neighbor. And we did go around and around a little bit when Mr. Lolio was here testifying as to whether or not this neighbor would actually be bothered by the third floor deck, and Sandoli family said they would have been bothered by the third floor deck on the rear, 'cause they're the ones who are most affected by it. They'll also recall that at that hearing, there was another neighbor who's slightly off kilter to the rear, who had submitted letters of, of support, but who wasn't here. So what we have now is a neighbor who since the last time the board heard this, has recanted her testimony, and I think you're gonna hear from that in a second, and then the question that goes back to the board is, had you been listening to support by the neighbors in the rear, would that have changed your mind? Because a big part of the discussion the last time around, there were two items we had discussed. The chief and Mr. Palmisano were talking about access for emergency personnel and the fact that having an extra means of ingress and egress into the building was important. That seemed to have been overcome by the fact that the rear yard deck off the back was ill-advised because the neighbor on the back, facing their backyard as well, thought that the deck would eat into their privacy a little bit, and I think respectfully, and we'll hear from, from her, didn't understand that the portion of the deck that they could go up until, meaning the Dorfman family stopped well short of the property box of the house, the Dorfmans could have had a second floor deck extended off of the back of the house, but they chose not to do that in favor of a cut-in third floor deck. So question to the board, which I'd like to discuss before we hear the testimony, is, do you understand what we're voting on now? It's not, did, were you wrong, I'm not, we're not saying you were wrong, we're saying that the witness was wrong, and if that testimony was incorrect, and the fact that the chief and Mr. Palmisano were interested in hearing more about the emergency personnel being able to get in and out, did that portion of the application yield to the neighbor saying, we don't want this deck, and that was a factor in, uh, you deciding to, to vote no? And that's why the new members aren't voting only all of you, 'cause you have the history of the case going back. So, um, before we hear from the witness, 'cause I am gonna, eh, eh, question her extensively, I wanna make sure we're on the same page as to exactly what we're discussing tonight.
I think we are, I think we're gonna hear from, uh, Ms. Sandoli.
Sandoli.
Hear what she says, and then li- in light of that, depending on what we hear, is the board going to reconsider its decision in denying this application?
Does that mean we will vote on the application?
We, we, yeah, we will, but we just have to create the record first and, and, and hear what...
So, if we, if we vote to reconsider, then there's a vote whether we approve it or not, correct?
Well, I think if you vote to reconsider, you're essentially saying, you, we, we were, based on this, they can, they can have the deck. It's not, it's rigid of a, of a two, two decks.
Well, I, I don't know if I agree with that, I mean, we, 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 we might vote to reconsider and rehear the testimony, but I don't know if that really...
But we heard the testimony, you don't get a second shot at the testimony, that, that's kind of my...
We're not gonna put on an architect, we're not putting any extra funds to...
They, they put, they put on the architect, they put on whatever they thought was the justification. A, a neighbor was opposed to it, we voted no. Now the neighbor is apparently gonna say something different, and that's the only thing we're really gonna hear, and, and based on that...
Will change our minds.
Correct.
And by right, a third floor deck can be in the front.
No.
No.
No, there's no third floor deck at all, so the only third floor deck would be the rear, if the board were to grant it, um, but there's no plan to put a third floor deck on in the front, because the front just looks out towards something that's less attractive than the back, which the board heard the last time was the sunset, and that was the whole purpose of designing the house the way it was. So we'd essentially be asking the board to consider the fact that the first time around, there was a fair, um, exchange, and hopefully the boards listen to the audio I have a few times, there was a fair exchange with the neighbors who didn't want their privacy infringed upon by the third floor deck off of the rear. So maybe, uh, Mr. Manos, if it's okay, we could probably get that neighbor sworn in.
Sure.
Um, and again, just, just so we're clear, your vote is not some acknowledgement that the board was wrong, the board made its decision based upon the evidence in front of it. What we're saying is, the evidence in front of the board the last time was wrong. So it's pretty much like the stuff you see on TV with the criminal trial where they find evidence after a, a jury verdict is rendered. You're the jury, if the evidence that you've seen is incorrect, then once you get the corrected evidence, we're hopeful that you'll vote in favor.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one question, uh, really, uh, counsel just, uh, made the comment about the board hearing the audio, um, of this lacking that, um, and not having the opportunity to review it, um, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, um, without any of us refreshing our memories, you know, exactly of the discussion that went on that night.
Well, I don't, I, I think to that...
And, and I'm not saying you know the board, I just don't know if we do it tonight.
Right, but I can't force the board to, to go re-listen to everything, I mean, i- i- if you don't, if...
I am not suggesting that you force them to do it.
You can abstain if you don't feel like you've, you've...
All right, fair.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
If you don't feel like what you've heard, um, gives you enough in- information to say whether we should reconsider our vote, then...
Or was our decision based on the neighbor's testimony or all the other professional testimony?
Right, and well, that's, that's part of the deliberations.
And the, the witness will testify now, right? This woman? Well, I'm saying if our decision last month wasn't based on what the neighbor said, it was based on all the other testimony. Maybe.
Well, respectfully, Rich, I think that's a problem, because there was a lot of back and forth with the neighbor. The only professional testimony was from Mr. Lolio.
Right.
And there was no other testimony in contravention of what the architect had to say. So I understand what Mr. Tolson's saying, which is, we want the board to grant this variance, we're willing to do what it takes to get it granted. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, I'm sorry?
I don't know if I said that, go ahead.
Well, but we, we want everyone to vote understanding exactly what was said, which was...
That part I agree with.
The neighbor was adamantly against granting it the last time around. And when we were talking about public portion of the meeting, Mr. Lolio testified, and then there was nobody else against the application, hopefully everyone remembers, other than the Sandoli family. So you have Mr. Lolio in favor, of course, as the architect, the applicant spoke, and then there was one family who spoke against the application, they have now changed their testimony. So I think it would be hard to say from the board's perspective that you didn't consider the neighbor speaking against the application, because under that scenario, all of the other testimony was in favor of the application.
But if you heard, if you listened to the testimony, it was a man, I, I went back and forth with a man that was testifying.
His husband.
Her husband, saying they had a better view from the second floor than they would from the third floor, I thought his argument was ridiculous, even though I was against the third floor deck in the rear. So, no, his testimony might, didn't, didn't affect me, I didn't agree with his testimony.
So, what you're proposing is to hear the neighbor's testimony, and then we're going to...
Hear the neighbor's testimony, in light of that, does that, i- i- is the board, does the board reconsider its decision?
Right.
And allow the, and allow the debt?
Right.
Or, or is the board's decision not changed?
So I'll listen to the neighbor's testimony, and then we'll get from there.
All right, but just to be clear, too, I'm, I'm, and Mr. Tolson made an interesting point, we want this, so we don't want the board to vote or to abstain if you're not comfortable going forward because a lack of refreshing your recollection from the prior case back in March, so that was two months ago. If the board members aren't gonna be able to vote based on not remembering what happened, then it might be worth the board members listening to the audio, because under that scenario, we could get a second no vote based upon not being comfortable with the audio from the first meeting, and then the whole purpose of this exercise would be moot.
I mean, I, I, I have something to say, but I'm gonna say, do you wanna have her testify first, or do you want me to say what?
I think it's, I, I'd, I'd like to hear what you have to say, Mr. Rich.
Well, I'm, okay, so I, I, there's a, uh, in this book here, which you're familiar with, the land use book, there's, there's a whole paragraph about a ju- ju- a judicata?
Res judicata.
Right, okay. So I'm gonna paraphrase, but basically what they're saying is that if there's already been a decision and there's no, we didn't, uh, what was it, fraud or mistake or, um, a substantial change or any type of change in what we've been around previously, which there isn't, then the case should not be reheard, because in theory, if somebody else gets denied something, and maybe there is a neighbor that, it's, the bottom line is a variance, either way, it's a variance. So, eh, you know, it's, it's so, it's something else, we deny something else and then, you know, and we did hear neighbor's testimony, that doesn't mean that we... and we did hear neighbor's testimony, that doesn't mean that we voted against it because of the neighbor's testimony. You know, maybe it was a factor, but we can't keep re, re, you know, bringing these cases back, and and it's, it's the law, it's written in the book, I, you know. I don't have the exact paragraph, well, I do have it on my phone, but-
But again, respectfully, I do have the exact case-
Right.
That says, if there is a mistake, the board must rehear the case. Res judicata is when you come back with the same application and nothing's changed.
Well, is that what we're doing?
No, we've got the application and something very substantial has changed. The sole person who spoke against the application is now recanting her testimony. That's no different than if someone says at a trial, that's the guy that did it, and comes back later and says, I was wrong, that's not the guy that did it.
I guess when I think of application, I think of like the, 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 you know, the architectural drawing, or, you know-
That's all the same, there's nothing changed about that.
I, I don't think of like, of the, of the, um, neighbor's testimony as being part of the application.
Well, if that's the case, you wouldn't have a public portion. The neighbor's testimony didn't matter, then you would never open it to the public.
Well, the, I, you know what I'm saying?
The issue is, in light of what we're about to hear, was, is that significant enough, or or did the, the, the prior testimony form such a, such a basis of your opinion that now in light of what we hear, the board's going to reconsider its vote? I, I don't know how-
Maybe we should hear from Mrs. Sandoli, and then perhaps the legal arguments can continue, or maybe our testimony will be so overwhelming, one way or the other, that we won't need to continue the legal argument. So, I don't want to belabor the legal point, but there are cases that say, same exact application, if someone made a mistake, the board has to rehear it, but-
Wouldn't, wouldn't that have to be substantial, or, or you're saying that is substantial?
Well, I think what she's about to say is going to be substantial. If you're going from no to yes, there's nothing more substantial than that. That's the equivalent of evidence that exculpates a person at trial.
And that's for the board to weigh, what, you know, her testimony, whether they, they feel it's credible, and whether or not, and regardless of that, is it sufficient enough for the board to reconsider its vote? But is, yeah, why don't we get her sworn in?
Last thing I'll ask. So, what we're about to hear, potentially hear, is going to define whether it was a mistake or a change of mind?
Yes, yeah, that's exactly right.
The law, the law talks about a mistake.
Correct.
Not a change of mind. Fair?
That is correct.
Yeah.
We're going to find out from the witness-
And the board's allowed to judge all-
That's right, Mr. Tolson.
And, and the, and the board can judge that?
Yeah.
Based on-
You're basically the jury at this point, of a criminal case. You can decide whether or not the evidence submitted the first time around was such that you based your decision on incorrect evidence. If you did, then potentially we have the right to this variance. If you didn't, and you say it doesn't change our mind at all, then your denial would stand. Mrs. Sandoli, would you come up, please? You're going to get sworn in?
Okay, Ms. Sandoli, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Linda Sandoli, 211 North Claretton Avenue, Margate City, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Thanks.
Mrs. Sandoli, you were here back in March with your husband, and of course, we know that you have some reservations about this deck, and you spoke out against it, which is okay, it's American, say what you want to say. But since that date, you have since, uh, since had a, uh, have a change of heart, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you explain to the board, and I'm not going to ask any questions, but it's very important that this is all you, it's not me guiding you. What happened, why are you here now supporting this application?
Uh, well, I had a conversation with both Mr. Dorfman and Mrs. Dorfman, and they explained to me the way the deck is situated, that they really wouldn't be able to look down into my house, and I guess that was my concern, and into my yard, so. Uh, based on that, I said, okay.
You were here with your husband before, and you thought that if they had a third floor deck, that would be a problem infringing upon your privacy, correct?
Yes, correct.
You've now looked at the plans again?
Yes.
And you think that that is as big a problem as you thought the first time?
No, I don't think it's as big a problem as it was the first time.
And Mr. Tolson, we're here to discuss the issue of state for a change of mind. When you saw the plans the first time around,
Mm-hmm.
Were you mistaken as to what the deck would do to your privacy?
Well, when I, I went to the office to look at the, the plans, and I guess I didn't understand the way it was going to be laid out. And so, but since then, with the conversation and, and looking at the plans, that's, I think it's, it's not what I envisioned, and so, I'm okay now with it.
This is important, as you heard earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Was that a mistake on your part, or did you just change your mind?
Oh, it was a mistake, because I thought the plans were different than what they were, because I didn't understand them.
Mr. Manus, do you want questions, the board can answer questions? I don't rely on the particular delay, because now we know that testimony is mistaken, but board members can answer anything, of course.
No, I don't, as the board attorney, but it's, it, the, the board members are welcome to ask questions.
Did you happen to go in the new house and look out that window in the back of the house at all? For the, for view?
Uh, no, I did not, because of the house.
Okay.
I don't even know what's inside of the house.
Okay, it was just a question whether you got in-
It's just the outside of the house, yeah.
Okay.
So-
I don't-
Leo, I guess my question, you, since you're the board lawyer, and you're land use lawyer, is do you think that what she said reaches the, the, you know, substantial, the re, re judicata or whatever, I mean-
It, it, it's, it's not, I can tell you, we're not dealing with res judicata. We're dealing with, in light of her now saying that this is not going to bother her, does that change the board's decision? Because, at least arguably, from Eric's perspective, when the, when, when Ms. Sandoli and her husband came out and opposed this project, that was a large driving factor in why the board denied it. Now she's here saying something else, and it's for the board to assess that and determine whether that was critical in, 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 in its decision, and in light of the new testimony, whether it's willing to reconsider its prior denial.
I just don't see that, what, what, we're, we're- Yeah, the case was decided.
Well, no means you don't want to hear the case again, and yes means you, you've changed your mind.
Right. So, when you change your mind, it means you're voting for the, for saying-
Right.
It was a material misstatement-
Right.
That was substantial in the entire case.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to use ridiculous examples, but like you said, it, it's a murder trial. Someone's convicted, and you have, maybe you have a hundred pieces of evidence, maybe you have three, maybe you have five, and they come back, and they, one piece changes. Witness changes their, their testimony, said, I, I made a mistake, that wasn't the guy I saw. In light of that, what was the, what was the reason, you know, for the conviction? What was the reason for the denial? Does this change, does this change anything from the board's perspective, is the, is the real issue?
Right.
I gotta say, it was presented by the architect and Mr. Goldberg about how that balcony was situated, and that they would not be able to see into the neighbors' yard at the meeting last time, and they would have instructed that.
Right.
So, if Mrs. Sandoli didn't get it at the meeting, you know, and they were pointing, you know, showing it on the plans and the elevations, why are we here now talking about it?
That, that's how you should vote if that's how you think about it.
Yeah, I mean, he made the application, we heard the testimony, now the board has to, has to, to weigh it and make its decision.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I, I think when you look at the blueprints, a, a lot of people don't understand blueprints, even on this board. A lot of people don't know what they're looking at with blueprints, and it's hard to envision what, what, how it's laid out on paper.
But she's talking about testimony, not blueprints.
What, she's talking about what?
She's-
Testimony.
She's talking about the testimony at the case, not reading the blueprints.
But the woman looked at the blueprints.
Right, and she was also here listening to the testimony.
Yes, she was, and your husband was more adamant, I, I, I felt, against the project. Like, he was pretty adamant about it. That's, that's why I-
He's not here.
Okay. So, we're gonna, you go, how are we gonna do this, though? We're not, uh-
Yeah, I-
Yeah, we're not, we're not- Just want to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I, I, I hesitate to even open it up to the public, but I think we just should, it doesn't look like there is anyone from the public, but just so it's on record.
Okay, anyone from the public, like, speak? All the portions closed.
Alright, does everyone understand the issue? So-
Explain what a yes/no is and a vote/no vote is.
I, I will do that, so we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to grant the applicants, because we always phrase motions in the affirmative, a motion to grant the applicants, the applicant's application for reconsideration. If you say yes, that means you're in favor, y, y, you're in, you're in favor of the third floor rear deck. You say no, you're not in favor of the third floor rear deck. Is that clear?
Yes.
Alright.
Affirming your no vote for me.
Basically, yes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Michael Richmond?
Now, are we, Leo?
Yes.
Are we, is the yes or no vote enough, or we, should we use some reasoning, or what our thoughts are, or?
You can-
Sometimes we do that.
You can say as much or as little as you prefer, as long as you say yes or no at some point.
So, my opinion is that we heard this case already. And I don't want to set a precedent, and I, I know what you're talking about, but there's, there was other testimony, it wasn't just the testimony of the neighbor, as far as I'm concerned, that made my vote be no. It's a variance. There's a reason that we decided, and believe me, it took a lo, it took like five or six years for us to allow third floor decks in the front. And there was thought, a lot of thought that went into third floor decks, and we decided that it wasn't a good idea to have them in the rear. So, I'm going to vote no.
Richard Patterson?
In the original case, I disagreed with the, with the, even though I voted no, I disagreed with the neighbor's reasoning, so I stick with my no vote, not to rehear the case.
Craig Pomisano?
I have to vote yes. Being in the fire of service and all that, for, for many years in my city, I vote yes on that. If, if, if you haven't been up on a third floor deck, front or rear of any of these new buildings, you're missing the views, you're missing the tremendous, uh, views of, of, of the city, the bay, the, the sunsets. It's a, it's a complete asset for the house, and my vote is yes.
Rich Tolson?
I vote no, based tonight, the same way it was in March, that it is a not permitted use.
Stephen Giacchi?
Uh, I vote no.
Drew Campbell?
I still stand firm on my no vote.
Patty Rosenberg?
Likewise, I stand firm on my no vote.
John Pitts?
No.
Motion fails, um, two in favor and six opposed.
Do we have other business?
Should we wait for the other members to come back?
Let's, let's just let the other board members- Herb? Herb? Herb?
Herb.
Herb?
Guys can come back.
Come back, Herb. Back, Herb.
Oh, I'm sorry, also on that last case, I said six were in favor and, or six were opposed? It was seven were opposed, and one was in favor. My apologies.
As late this afternoon, Roger sent an email around about the ground floor enclosures, enclosed areas below BFE, and I guess a proposal for what Longport is considering. Uh, we've been talking about this for a while, with the new members, um, you know, spaces below the finished first floor. If we need some more discussion about that, but I, I thought we should at least discuss it a little bit tonight, if we want to move forward, Roger, any just comments?
Sure, the idea has been discussed for a while, since we've been allowing the ground floor bifema standards, is allowed to be parking, storage, and entryway. And of course, you know, the reasoning behind it is, if you have a seven, seven foot tall crawl space, make it usable space. Well, nowadays, not everyone, but most people seem to be abusing it. And they're not parking in there, it's becoming a game room, it's becoming a, you know, a thousand square foot, whatever. Which is fine, I mean, there's certain uses, I, I don't want to go to the extreme that Longport's proposing, but we've been discussing internally, uh, requiring that ground floor to be a certain percentage open. So, particularly like one, at least one car space to have open on one or two walls. So, it has to be used for parking, can't be used for anything else. Longport's going to the extent where they're requiring a maximum three hundred square foot enclosure of that ground floor. Where they come up with the three hundred square foot is in a velocity zone, bifema standards, that's the maximum you're permitted on the ground floor to have enclosed space, and the purpose of that is to have an enclosed foyer, small storage area, but to get to the first floor. I think that's a little too much, and I think that would not look like Margate, but I think the, it's a, I'd like to see what other towns are doing around us, because we're all on the same proverbial boat. So, that's, that's a topic of discussion, I, I think, if you, I'm asking you all to do some homework and see what kind of percentage you're looking at. A thought that I've had is, you know, we require on the third floor, at a half story, can't be greater than fifty percent of the floor below. Something similar might work, be, or at fifty percent of the floor above, has to be, can't be-
Fifty percent, we can come up with any percent.
It can, right, any percent. But the idea is to have at least one parking space under the building, open.
Well, that, that's not the Longport's doing, right?
Longport's going a little bit two steps further.
Well, I thought, but from what I understand, because I, I'm building a couple houses in Longport right now, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen anything yet, and this is actually coming about recently with Longport, but Longport and Margate are two different towns, but I haven't seen anything about them doing what we had talked about earlier, which Ocean City does a lot. And I don't know if the reason was, well, you worked in Ocean City, was the reason that they had that open, so you, or was that just more of a flood thing?
Well, a combination of both, and the location of the, those samples I provided, there is no alleyway, so they had to use off, off Bay Avenue. So, in order to keep the people off of Bay Avenue, they had to make sure they're using the parking space below. We are more similar to Ocean City on that Bay Avenue site, because we don't have alleyways. So, we need to make sure they're using the off, off-street parking more, you know, we're giving them four or five parking spaces. Two of them in a drive, or three in a driveway, two of them under the house. Well, they're not using two under the house. They're using maybe one in the driveway, if, if that. So, in, in my opinion, we should be encouraging to use the parking, and a benefit of having that open is they're also not converting it to other space.
You're saying open, like, just, like, just pilings?
Slat, slat wall, a slat wall where air gets in the-
No, we don't want to expose pilings, we don't want to look like the, you know, like Rodan's City, or Ocean City, but-
We've seen examples with brick pillars or stone pillars and things of that nature. We've seen examples with brick pillars or stone pillars and things of that nature.
But over a door.
Yes.
For at least the front parking spot, right. And the other idea of keeping a side open is, a lot of times, people don't pull into the garage, because they're not big enough, they don't like opening the car doors inside an enclosed space. So if you take that part away, they're more inclined to use it.
Have you circulated the examples?
Uh, no, I. No, I, I can redo that.
I think it's worthy to take the drive and take a look at it, so you get the visual of what you're talking about.
Right.
We could look at Percy's house and see how they get in the garage.
Yeah.
Don't look at her house.
Why?
Because you can't get in the garage.
There is a house on.
No, you can, you can.
There, there is a house on Fremont, if you have a chance, drive down Fremont, there's a house on the bayside on Fremont, that I think has.
Where on Fremont, what's across the street?
I'm still using the microphones, everybody, because it's still recorded.
It's between Harding and.
Did you say we're being recorded?
Yes, it's still on the.
Okay.
Uh, actually, it might be, it's probably between Wilson and Harding. And it's, they've got two parking spaces under the house that are open. And for me, it's exactly what we want. I don't know how we define that and put it in an ordinance, but sometime between now and the next meeting, take a drive up Fremont, it's on the bayside, you'll see it right away.
Like, in, in Vettner, we have a similar requirement where we allow additional height to park underneath. We changed that ordinance, well, all right, they're getting the additional height, they need five parking spaces, they're putting one underneath the house and four outside. So we changed the rule there, that have to require parking, have to be under the house. But they, they require it to be fully enclosed.
How do you enforce that?
How do you enforce what?
Parking it under the house.
It has to be available, you can't go and make sure they're parking there. It's just gotta be available.
It shows up on a plan, we have to approve it, that's the whole idea of what we're talking about tonight, is if it's open, they can't use it for anything else.
Not feasible. Because you can't enforce that either, right, after it's built.
Right.
Right, but it's less likely to be storage of stuff.
If it's open.
But it's not gonna turn, we know what it's not gonna be.
It's not even storage, it's a problem, it's the extra bedrooms they're putting down here, which makes it a variance for a parking.
I think in Longport, it's different than what we're talking about here. Because from what I understand in Longport, what they're trying to do is, like, we're building a house in Longport now, and there's storage rooms, but they're, they have styrofoam insulation, because it's waterproof, and they have waterproof sheet rock. So, I think what, not I think, I know what Longport's doing is, they're gonna only let, they're gonna, they're giving you three hundred square feet of foyer, which, I, it depends on the size of the house, so I think that would have to be not just three hundred feet of foyer, you know what we're talking about now? Because a lot of the houses are up in the air, and you have the grade level where you walk in and that's your foyer. So, in Longport, they're saying any other place besides that foyer cannot be finished at all, except for the ceiling. So you basically have cinder block all the way around. So that's what they're talking about in Longport, I don't really think they're talking about what we're talking about, which is having open parking underneath.
But also, we don't want heating and air conditioning down there, which is also a, a, well, holdback.
Go ahead.
Stops them from using, again, the problems bedrooms, and if you don't have.
Right.
If you don't have air control.
Right, right, but in the foyer, you gotta have some, you know.
You can, and the foyer can be enclosed.
Right.
And you can have heating and air in the foyer. But that's the, the closing.
Right.
As long as all the openings are above the FFE, right.
In Longport, right, yeah, you.
You can have heating and.
Well, I don't think it's been passed yet, has it?
No.
No.
No, but that's in that, it, it said that in there.
Right, we, we've been sharing information for, for the last fifteen years, and.
The house across the street from me, they've got crown molding, they've got heat and air conditioning.
Right.
On the, on the new building, ground level? On the ground?
Yeah, but that's not just the one across from me, it's all over town.
Yeah, well, a lot of them.
They've got, uh.
Everyone you can't see.
Warp floors.
I don't know that it's necessarily all over town, though, like, my, my ground floor, we've been in the house for two years now, there's no heating or air conditioning.
I'd say eighty percent, it's.
I don't think eighty percent, I think that's.
Fifty percent, a large number.
Well, even if it's fifty percent, it's more than it's allowed to be.
Well, a lot of them though, now too, they, you know, with their little postage stamp swimming pools in the back, you know, to get enough room to move around the swimming pool.
Well, they're leaving it open there.
They're leaving the back end of the garage open.
Correct.
To create an eye area.
Party room, is that a storage?
For, for now, for now. In five years, it'll be enclosed.
So I, there is a subcommittee that John is on, that's heading this, and then, um, I would like to have some input on that, and then, you know, we'll come back and present it again to the board and get your opinion on it. One thing I wanna make sure of is that the, um, the commissioners and the, um, city solsters are all understand what we're talking about.
They will.
Yeah. So, all right.
Good.
Again, thanks to the new board members.
Can I, can I make one final comment for the new board members? Be careful with your testimony and what you say, I mean, Mr. Goldstein, you heard tonight, is an expert at remembering everything we said, and he will bring it back. Uh, I wouldn't be too surprised if he came back and said, Mr. Tolson said that he didn't remember the testimony, so he might come back yet again and say that there was a mistake at this one tonight, so just.
Speaking from his experience?
Yes, be cautious with what you say.
That's true.
Yeah, it just goes for anyone, if anyone ever has any questions, call.
Yeah. Another thing, Joe, how, did you, what did you do on that one?
I recused myself on, um.
On. Right, so, next time, what, if you're gonna recuse yourself, it's to Leo before.
We'll just do it before, yeah.
Yeah.
And you get up and leave.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't, you go out in the audience, that's all.
Right.
The automatic recusals are, if you're on the two hundred foot list, you're automatically, so if you get a letter in the mail, um, you know, sometimes we might miss it as a board, but if you get.
Or whatever, like the relationship.
Then you know you can't, or if you have some type of relationship with the, with the person, like I said, like I was telling Herb earlier, it's Margate, a lot of people know each other. Just 'cause you know somebody, isn't, doesn't mean, mean you have to recuse yourself, but if you're to the point where, geez, I, I can't impartially judge this, then you should. And then if you have some sort of financial interest in the application, something like that.
And then it goes on the record that you recuse yourself, and then it goes on the record that you're now back on the board.
Right. So.
Is there a terminology that we can use if, based on testimony, we don't feel comfortable voting? In the moment, this is now.
No, you just tell ahead of time that you're.
Well, no.
No, that would be abstaining.
Yeah, abstain, yeah.
But that counts as a no, right, Leo?
Technically, yeah, it, it gets weird, but generally speaking, it means it's a no.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't count as a vote?
Personally, right, from being on the board for a long time, you can, it really tried, unless something really comes up like you're talking about, try not to abstain. You're here to make a decision, yes or no.
Yeah, like you said, there might be a rare situation halfway through the hearing, you're, you're like, oh, shoot, I just realized this, and, uh.
Yeah.
And it happens.
Right, Rich?
Right.
Okay, anybody?
What?
Anyone else, anything else? No?
I think the motion to the meeting be adjourned.
All in favor?